Roll call. Mr. Motley?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Stowe?
Janet Meese?
Here.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Haymore?
Present.
Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mr. Davis? So we have three out. Okay, the next item on the agenda is election of chairman and vice chairman for the year of 2019.
Madam Chair, nominate Mr. Motley as chairman, Mr. Dudley as vice chairman.
Second that domination.
Okay, so Mr. Motley as chairman, Mr. Dudley as vice chairman. So I'll do a vote. Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes. Thank you.
That's right.
First of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their support and having confidence in electing me as chairman again, and I want to thank them for the year 2018, especially the support.
Yep.
And Mr. Dudley, keeping time.
Yes.
Everything, I really appreciate that, and thank y'all. Now, do I still need to do vice chairman since the motion was for the chairman and vice chairman?
I think that would stand for that.
No, I think that was sufficient.
I think so. Well, Mr. Dudley, I'd like to welcome you as vice chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everybody's confidence. Absolutely, thanks.
Looking forward to working with
Yes, indeed.
Each one of you. Next on the agenda is the hearing of the citizens. No one has signed up. If anyone here did not get to sign up, wish to address the commissioners on anything other than what's on the agenda. Here now, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Horn for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Dudley.
All right, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Approval of the minutes, December the 4th, 2018.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Haymore.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Dudley.
Yes.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, five, four, three absent. And I'd like to go back on the approval of the agenda, make the correction of five present, three absent. Chairman's report. I received a call from Mr. Sides last week, and I understand Appalachian Power wished to address the commissioners that this is not a public hearing. This is just for the information to the commissioners, and so the audience can also be present. Is that, Mr. Sides, I'll turn it over to you.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. This is an information item, basically a courtesy visit for the planning commission, because they will be coming before the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals in the future for a special use permit for a new transmission line that they're working on. But they wanted to make sure the planning commission was in the loop early, and in discussing this with them, we thought it would be a real good idea to come early and give you guys some background information.
Mm-hmm.
So we have Appalachian Power in attendance tonight, and I believe, Mr. Porter, well, I'll just invite the whole team. They brought a full group of representatives with them tonight, so we're honored to have such a distinguished team here.
I'd like to welcome you to the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission, thank y'all for coming, and I'll turn it over to y'all, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Bailey, I'm on the transmission. Oh, that works better, doesn't it? Thank you. I'm transmission project manager. I'm here today to introduce a project to you. We have been working with the regional industrial facility to bring power to the mega site at Berry Hill here. As you know, this is an area where we're looking to bring in some large industrial customers. One of the concerns is, do we have adequate power, and is it reliable power? So we have been working with REFA to begin the infrastructure. We're looking at some alternatives and some various ways to bring power in, both a transmission line and also a potential substation, which then serve the customers that come in, the industrial customers that come into this mega facility. So we're being prepared to do that. We have a number of steps along the way. Just wanted to introduce to you the project, get any feedback that any of you have. Also wanted to talk about some of the next steps that we have coming up, and some public information meetings that we will be doing. George Porter, he's with us, he's our outreach specialist.
Welcome, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, guys. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Tom said, my name is George Porter. I am the project outreach specialist for Appalachian Power in this territory. So now, next step, now that we've had preliminary conceptual route for our project, as Tom was saying, you know, we have an area inside of the industrial park where we feel like would be more than, maybe a good location for the substation, but now we have to get from point A to point B. Point A is a substation, and point B is a transmission line that we need to tap. So what you guys are seeing on the map, as well as on your fact sheets, on the maps on your fact sheets, there's various lines to get up from point A to point B. We need to get down to one route. So the next step would be to invite the public, everyone that's affected along these routes. We pulled the information, we pulled the data, it's about 115, 120 landowners along those routes. We've already sent them an invitation to our open house that we're having next week. We sent out, we're going to send out additional letters that you guys have and fact sheets. So we're going to put it, we put it in the paper last week, it's going to be in the register and be in the day, it's going to be in the next week. We're doing everything we can to make sure landowners know that you get this in the mail, you see it, it's scary. You don't know what's coming, you don't know what's happening, you just hear power project, power line, you think we're going to come and take your property, et cetera. So we want to give everyone our opportunity to come out next week, January 9th at Rossville Elementary School, 5:30 to 7:30. We want all the feedback about what we have on this paper. We think we know what can be the best route from point A to point B, but we won't know until we get the feedback. We have to know if there's trees on your property or special conditions, special circumstances that you don't want us to, that you want us to address. So we really want you guys to push landowners, if you guys have received calls from Mr. Spill and Mr. Haymore, we're pretty much crossing through your guys' districts, so chances are you may get a large number of phone calls from your constituents. Let them know, come to the open house. We're going to have every department represented, you know, engineering, siding, construction management, forestry, everyone that can be there is going to be on hand next week to answer any questions. We also have a website, appalachianpower.com/berryhill. Give you feedback on there, you can comment on there as well. There's also an interactive map, you can kind of zoom in a little bit closer and get a better look at the routes and see how you may be affected. So any issues as of today, right now, any phone calls, just let them know. Next week, Appalachian Power will be having open house at Rossville Elementary School. Please come out, 5:30 to 7:30, we'll be there, we'll answer any questions. We're also looking to try to get any feedback from you guys, any suggestions that we need to address. We're, like Tom said, we're partnering with REFA in this. We've done the research up to this point, but we still need more information from the community as well as, as you say, to help us get down to one bit, one bit of line route.
Mr. Porter, you saying it's coming, it's being west over in Tunstall primarily, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Well, right now, coming out of the substation, we're crossing through those districts, that will be the major districts that we're touching.
Where is the substation now that you'll be coming out of?
It will be located in the mega industrial park, inside of the actual industrial park.
Okay, but why, will it run north, south, or east-west? How will it?
Well, it's, if you see the
Here's the substation.
Okay.
The potential site for the substation, and then these yellow goldfish lines are potential routes to tap into our existing transmission line.
Where's existing now? That's what I, I guess.
Yep, there's a, yep, black line across the top, so every yellow line is connecting to that existing transmission line.
Which has the
Which is just north of 58. The existing line is just north of 58. So we need to get back to that transmission line, as you can see, it's the spaghetti stream, there's multiple options to get back from that substation to that line, so, but we're only going to choose one route. I know landowners will see this, and they'll be, oh my God, Berry Hill, you know, eight, nine, 10 different transmission lines, no, it's just one. But we need to figure out which route to go.
The substation is in the city of Danville, is that direct?
It's in the industrial park.
Oh, it's in the industrial park.
The substation's not there, sir.
It's not there yet.
We're still studying this, you know.
Okay.
We need to gather the feedback and hear from the community. You know, we've done our research, we want to hear from them as well.
So what you've shown me, Freddie, is not the city of Danville, that's the Berry Hill industrial park.
That's the industrial park.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, you mentioned this is going to be for large customers like companies, or is it going to come on down to single phase? Just three-phase?
This is, this is designed, the REFA has asked us to do this for the industrial customers.
Okay, alright. So those large demand customers, okay. Sure.
Economic development and jobs.
Will this be 880 or 440, or, I mean, what can you supply to the industrial? Is it going to be a limit?
That, it would be 138 KB
138, yep.
That comes into a substation, and out of the substation, we'll probably have a 34,000 five-hundred distribution line that would then bring power to the individual customers, and then they would take their own transformation, or we would transform it down to 277 or 80 or whatever
Sure.
Which they need. We can only serve customers inside that park, because that's all of Appalachian service territory is. The city of Danville has the whole service territory around the park, so we can only serve customers inside.
Okay.
But you can go over 277 more, you say 480? I believe what is, 880 is the next step, but the
Most
I'm familiar with, that's
Customers will take either a primary, if there are large customer like being, they will probably take power from us at actually 34,000 five hundred. They could possibly take it at the 138 that we bring in, and then own their own transformation and take it to whatever they need.
What they need, okay.
What's the width of the right-of-way for the transmission?
The right-of-way would be approximately 100.
100 foot, okay.
Brand-new right-of-way.
Yes.
We will have to address that with that.
Yes.
One of the main reasons why, you know, you hear 100 feet, like, wow, that's a good swap.
Yes, it is.
We're talking about
Will that be a restricted right-of-way, or will you be able to sub-lease it out, or?
Well, we're so early in the process right now, our right-of-way department will be on hand with us next week, they'll be able to discuss in details with each individual landowner, because there will be special requests that come up in the process of negotiation.
Because I'm sure landowners are going to be asking, hey, what's
And we do try to, kind of, if it's feasible, we do try to compaign, you know, we're trying to move it maybe complex around.
And I'd really like to reiterate something that George said earlier. Please, if there's folks that have questions, please encourage them to come out to this open house. I mean, that's how we learn things. That's how we learn that, no, there's a cemetery there, I mean, you know, an old historic one or something. We really want to, we really want to hear from the public, you know. We're trying to do the best and pick the appropriate route. We've, you know, we've laid some out based on what we know, we're gathering additional information from the public to, you know, to really make the best choice.
So following the open house, we'll gather all our information, we'll get our feedback from everything the landowners come in and tell us. We'll sit down as a team, we'll take a look at that, we'll continue to take feedback from landowners in February, about the first of February. At that point, we want to try to nail down a route. We want to then come back and submit an application to the zoning, board of zoning appeals, so we can try to get approval, S U P, from that. Now, the question that we want to kind of present to you guys is, what level of detail? I know you may not have all the answers for this, but we want to know what level of detail will we need for that approval, for that route? Do we need to provide you guys a corridor? Do we figure out the left route, or the east, the west route is best, the east route? Or do we need to be more detailed? And I know we may need to, maybe address that. That's one question.
Have that discussion with staff.
Okay.
We're coordinating with the chairman.
Sure.
Okay.
Perfect. Now, coming out of the substation, what is it going to be? Two, three-phase lines, or triple circuit, or what is it going to be?
It'll be, everything will be
Double? Double circuit, okay.
Or everything going to be one It will depend on the customer. The transmission line coming to the park is double-circuit.
Yes, uh-huh.
Coming out of
Substation?
It will depend on what type of customer
That's right, yeah.
That will determine that.
Okay.
If there's enough load, we can run double-circuit.
That's right, yep.
If there's not, then we run a single three-phase. But everything coming out of that substation will be three-phase.
Okay.
And we also want to mention, we always, always like to tell landowners this, this is a transmission line, this is not a distribution line.
Mm-hmm.
These poles are going to be about 100 feet tall, on average. If you guys look at your fact sheet, you can have pictures of those structures. So we want to be honest, we want to be open, let them know this, you know, our distribution poles, 30, 40 feet, these are 100 feet, these are the big ones. We want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding down the road when we come and we bring the pole, you know, oh, I didn't know, but these are the big ones, so.
That's the one that you hear sizzling.
You hear, you hear power boogers.
Yep, yep.
So once we get our route approval, we'll come back to the board and march and try to receive approval for the S U P. That's our timeline right now.
Yep.
We just want to introduce this to
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? I want to thank y'all for coming, it's really helpful
Yeah.
Yes.
To us, that we know where it is. Thank y'all.
Good luck to y'all in this endeavor, I think you'll be alright.
Chairman, just to give you a bigger picture, too, I know you see about the Berry Hill Industrial Park in the newspaper from time to time, and it's been going on for quite some while. It is a very long, drawn-out process to do a major industrial park, when you have to get various permits and environmental permits and do studies. But just to let you know that we've got water and sewer projects underway right now to serve the park, and we've already graded over 100 acres for a pad site for the park, and we've got funding since then to expand that pad site. And how the power fits in is, we've got to get to a point of, we're trying to get to the development-ready stage. We're trying to get to that shortest window as possible. When the prospects come along and they're looking for a major industrial site, they don't want to hear, well, in two or three years, we can probably get it set up for you. So we're trying to get to a shorter window as possible to be able to say, the water, the sewer, everything is here, and the power is part of that progression. So we need to be able to say, we've got a route, we've got an answer for the power as well. So that's, that's our strategy, and we're on course for that.
Thank you, Mr. Sides.
Thank you all, again.
Still in the chairman's report, Ms. Meese?
Yes, sir. Oh, I'd like to announce there's going to be another public information meeting in my district, which is the Callens-Gretner district. Patrick Buckley, the director of development for this company called Open Road Renewables, has a potential plan for a solar energy facility to be located in the Climax area. And he has arranged for a meeting Monday, January the 7th, at 7 o'clock, at the Climax Ruettin Meeting. It's an informative meeting for, a time for questions and answers of any concern for the community. I would like to invite my co-commissioners, if they are available that night, to come out. I'd love to have your support as well. Again, that's Monday, January the 7th, at 7 o'clock, at Climax Ruettin Meeting, building. It is open to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Meese. I think Mr. Horn can back up how important it is, these public hearings, especially on the solar, because you have one in your
Two.
Two, in your area, and I think the citizens really appreciate it, so back this.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I'll be in another meeting, but that's
Thank you.
Any other? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the planning commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance, and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, its citizens, and its posterity, in the best interest of Pennsylvania County. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:21, case R-19-001 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-001, Kimmy Lackey, has petitioned to rezone a total of 1.90 acres located on Long Circle in the Tunstall Election District from B2 Business District General to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow for placement of a double-wide mobile home. Once the properties are rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35222 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lackey is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Lackey, will you please come forward?
Good evening, sir.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners, other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to them?
No, sir, no.
Any questions? No one has signed up to speak against this case, so, oh, there's no questions, anything? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
At 7:22, case R-19-001 is closed to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, this is in the Tunstall District. Mr. Stowe, his wife had surgery and was not released from the hospital until about 5:30 or 6 o'clock, and he could not be here tonight. He stated he'd had no opposition from this, so based on that, case R-19-001, that the zoning be rezoned from B2 to R1, I move that that be done, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Haymore to recommend to Board of Supervisors to change his zoning from B2 to R1 is the second.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Meese, any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe? Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Case R-19-001 is passed to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to change his zoning from B2 to R1, vote 5, 4, 3 absent. At 7:23, case R-19-002 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-002, Thomas Crawford, has petitioned to rezone 13.19 acres located on Bobby Road in the Stanton River Election District from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Crawford is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Crawford, will you please come forward? Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners, other than what Ms. Hayes already has?
No, sir.
Any questions? No one has signed up to speak on this, so at 7:24, case R-19-002 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Dudley?
Mr. Chairman, I did go and visit this location, also talked to Mr. Crawford. It's got a nice location over there. And so with that, case R-19-002, I'd like to send forward recommending the rezoning for RC1 to A1, and send that forward to the Board of Supervisors.
Motion by Mr. Dudley to recommend to Board of Supervisors to change his zoning from RC1 to A1 is the second.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Meese, any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, call the roll.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe? Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Case R-19-002 is passed to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to change his zoning from RC1 to A1, by the vote of 5, 4, 3 absent. At 7:25, case R-19-003 is open to public hearing.
Case R-19-003, Pontefort Farms, has petitioned to rezone a half an acre located on Old Mine Road in the Callens-Gretner Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent parcel. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Fred Elliott is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Elliott, will you come forward, please? Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commission, other than what Ms. Hayes has already?
Good evening, yes. This is really a cleanup action of a half an acre, to revert back to agricultural zoning. It's in the middle of an orchard now, I just purchased a property, and we're just trying to clean it up, and all the surrounding property there, including our cattle farm that surrounds it, is agriculture, we're just trying to clean it up.
Any questions for Mr. Elliott? No one has signed up to speak for the board. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. At 7:27, case R-19-003 is closed to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I have had no opposition on this. Our map, as you see in your booklet, clearly sees that this lot is surrounded by A1, so therefore I have no problems with that. It is in my district, it's a nice area that you're trying to get up there. Appreciate that, in my district. So in case R-19-003, I make a recommendation that we send this to the Board of Supervisors for their approval, as requested.
Motion by Ms. Meese to recommend to Board of Supervisors to change his zoning from R1 to A1, is that a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, by Mr. Haymore, any discussions? If not, Ms. Meese, I mean, Ms. Hayes, will you call?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe? Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Case R-19-003 is recommended to the Board of Supervisors to change his zoning from R1 to A1, by motion passed, 5, 4, 3 absent. Dr. Miller, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you, sir. We had another meeting, kind of ran over.
Well, you know you'd be at two places at one time, I mean, that's
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Case R-19-004, at 7:29, is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-004, Suzie Q LLC, has petitioned to rezone 18.14 acres located off McDaniel Road and Riceville Road in the Bannister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural uses and recreational uses, which will also require special use permit if approved. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Susan Brown is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Brown, will you come forward, please?
Suzie Q?
Anybody represent, want to speak on this case?
I do not see her.
I would speak on, I'm up here, there's representative
Okay. Dr. Miller, you familiar with this case, or you want to say anything before I call the public, or would you rather have the public come first? What would you think?
I prefer to have the public
Okay. Ma'am, come forward, you didn't sign up, please, you had the opportunity to welcome you. Good evening. State your name, please.
Jane Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
And I live a couple of driveways down from where they're planning on putting, proposing putting this thing at. And the road right now, when we have hunters, it can't take the traffic. So with this, it's going to be added traffic, and it's in a bad spot because there's a little knoll that you have to come down the road and come over. And it's like a blind spot. And I don't, I really don't think we can take all that traffic with what they're proposing to put that, put there.
Any questions for Ms. Hayes?
Ma'am, are you a property, a joining property on the...
I'm not a joining property. I'm next right down the road. I can look up the road and see this property.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The reason I asked, I didn't see your name on the adjacent property on. That's what I wanted to make sure.
No, I'm adjacent, I'm on the right side, two driveway down.
Thank you, ma'am. Question?
Yes.
Do you know whether or not the owners of the Suzie Q property live in the same community?
I'm not aware that they do.
You'll get to speak in just a minute, ma'am.
Okay, so you don't know?
No, I, that owns Suzie Q's property, property that they're trying to put something on, I don't think they live anywhere. I see four wheelers coming out from time to time from deep down in the woods there, but I don't see them.
Do you have any idea where they may live?
No, they don't live there. I see people come and go on four-wheeling trucks.
Oh, okay. Thank you, we got it.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Ronnie Barber, and I stay right there at five oh now where they give it to put there. So there's what they do and do. And see, I got some old peers there, grandparents and stuff. And I don't think they should come there either because there is traffic back and forth and there's a bunch of hunters back and forth there, that's it.
I'm familiar with the lodge where you turn out at six forty, the Masonic Lodge. I remember that lodge, so I am familiar with the property that you're talking about.
Yes.
But the... Any questions for? Thank you.
For the record, what was your name?
Ronnie Barber.
Ronnie Barber.
Yes, Ronnie Barber.
No one else, I mean, no one signed up. We've had two. Is anyone else here who wish to speak to this case? Dr. Miller, you want to go ahead and close the public hearing? At seven thirty-four, case R nineteen dash oh oh four is closed to public hearing. Ms. Hayes. Dr. Miller, you want?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, case R dash one-nine dash zero zero four, it obviously would have been better to have heard from folks that are making the petition, but I assume we've not had any contact from them?
No, sir.
Well...
That makes a difference.
Yeah, that makes a bit of a difference to my mind. So in that case, I'm going to recommend denial of this case to the board of supervisors.
Motion by Dr. Miller to recommend to the board of supervisors not to change his zoning from R one to A one, is that a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. Horn, any discussions?
I agree with Dr. Miller. Just insufficient information is what we're basing our recommendation on.
I agree one hundred percent. Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe? Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Case R nineteen dash oh oh four is recommended to the board of supervisors to not change his zoning from R one to A one by vote of six-four-two absent. At seven thirty-five, case S nineteen dash oh oh one, open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case S nineteen oh oh one, Hope Center Ministries, has petitioned for a special use permit on twenty point oh-six acres located on Walnut Creek Road in the Westover Election District for a residential addiction treatment group home. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Gary Robertson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Robertson, will you come forward, please? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. We've gathered on this thing several times over the last number of weeks and getting down closer to where we need to be. I want to give some information that may clear up some misnomers about what we're talking about. I've gotten word through the grapevine that some think it's a halfway house or maybe a place for indigent people who have no other place to live. That's not what we're talking about at all. Hope Center Ministries, which is a faith-based program, but started in Tennessee in two thousand and seven, and now has grown to some nine centers, from Texas to Tennessee and now to Virginia. This petition is relative to a women's hope center here in Pennsylvania County. Certainly can't speak a lot relative to the results of that at this point because it hasn't happened yet. But I can give you some information relative to a center that is already going in the area, located in Henry County, where we're looking at a women's center here. There's a men's center in Henry County. During the five, I mean, two and a half years that that center has been open, we have houses that are in the area. There has not been the first concern mentioned of residents in the area relative to it. Why? Because they haven't had issues with it. Problems have not occurred. Some had some questions early on about, for instance, I'm not sure I want individuals that are addicts or been addicts or what have you in my neighborhood. And the response that we gave them was, the fact that they are not in a center doesn't mean they're not in the community. Unfortunately, the world that we live in currently, not just in Henry County, but I'm in jails here in Pennsylvania County as well, and have had your judges here in the area to release guys to us, so I know you have the problems here too. The fact that you don't have a recovery center located in the area doesn't mean you don't have the problem in the area. And, you know, my thinking is, I had rather have somebody that is dealing with drug addiction problems in a recovery facility where there's supervision than them knocking on my door at midnight, trying to get in my house to find someplace to stay or something that they can get upon. So that's the first part of the thing. It is a needed facility in this area. The federal government is recognizing the need. The state government is recognizing the need. And we as citizens, we have an option. If you will indulge me for just a moment in a personal thing. My father is ninety years old. He is a World War II veteran. He, at age seventeen, joined the Navy. Why? Because he knew that he couldn't live with himself if he let other people put their lives on the line to protect his community and his country, and he sat back and did nothing. Growing up in his home, I heard two things very often, two statements. The first one is, talk comes cheap. It's one thing for us to talk in the newspapers and what have you about, we need to do something about this drug problem, we need to have a meeting about this, a meeting about that. But the reality of it is, nothing happens until somebody does something. Talk is okay to a point, but if you don't do anything about it, you've still got the problem, and the problem will continue to grow. The other thing that he said fairly often was, all it takes for evil to abound is for good people to do nothing. I've been a resident of Pennsylvania County. I've spent time in Pennsylvania County. Pennsylvania County has good people in it. But if good people sit back and because they don't want this or that or don't want to be inconvenienced or are not sure how this is going to work or that's going to work, we're sitting back and doing nothing and let others taking control of our community that takes away the safety, that takes away the security, that takes away the peace of mind that we need. Now, I wish we didn't have to have hope centers. I wish we could shut them all down, because I wish the problem wasn't here. But that's not the real world that we live in. And I appreciate this board and how you have allowed us to go through this process over time. But I will also say to you that leadership sometimes is making decisions that are not popular, but they're right. Thank you for your time.
We've got some people to speak, so you get to come back, Mr. Robertson. Ms. Betty Tuck? Excuse me, I don't mean to sing you out, but just remind you, you do have three minutes.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I've been here quite a few times.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Betty Tuck, and I live on Mount Cross Road, but Jim Scares is a new friend that I have met in regards to this petition. I talked to him over the weekend before he left on his trip, and he asked me to kind of help with this signing of some of the petitions and getting some names for your review. Would the people who have come tonight in the area of Walnut Creek Road stand up so we can at least recognize you?
Good evening and welcome.
Since I don't live on Walnut Creek Road, but I live in the community that is very close to this area, I have a lot of reservations about this particular type of home that is much needed, but we feel like in the area that we're talking about, that another area would be a better fit. But the only thing I would add is that we hope that the planning commission will at least listen to the signatures and hear our plea to ask that you do not approve this in lieu of the hundred and two signatures that we've turned in.
You have a petition, do give it to Ms. Hayes. Excuse me.
That's all.
Any questions for Ms. Tuck? Thank you. Ms. Fitzgerald? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Angela Fitzgerald. My husband and I, Ed and I, live in the Bannister District, and we are in Cairo's prison ministry, involved in that, at Green Rock, and we are supporters of Hope Center Ministries. I'd like to speak about the rezoning and in support of the Hope Center going into this place. Fifteen years ago, I would have been first in line to sign a petition to stop a center for addicts in my neighborhood. You see, I didn't know what I didn't know. But then life happened, and God worked a miracle. Thirteen years ago this month, I realized that the person I loved the most was an addict. Addiction is scary. It's very scary, but there's hope for those who want hope and who want help. Fortunately, my family member, he wanted help. He chose to get sober. He had to leave the state of Virginia to get the help he needed, where he could have stayed here locally. Had that Hope Center in Henry County been there, he could have gone there. But he had to leave the state to get the help he needed. Ours is a success story, but we're in the minority because many rehabs are very short-term, and many recovering addicts are not equipped to do day-to-day life sober and therefore return to their addiction. That's why we have this cycle going in our prisons and in our jails. You see the same people coming through. That's where Hope Center Ministries can help the families in our community. I don't know about you, but I know many families in my neighborhood in the Bannister District whose lives have been absolutely turned upside down because of addiction. Sorry, I'm shaking. These are not the dregs of society, not by any means. There are family members of business owners, upstanding members of our county. Just this year, a prominent family down the road from me buried their only daughter, the mother of two beautiful children because of drugs. Another wonderful neighbor across the street from us, she's in and out of rehab. This could be my daughter, who has had multiple surgeries and has been put on opioids for pain relief. You know, one extra pill could trigger something in the brain that makes her an addict. I need a place for my family. I need a place for my neighbors. Whether you realize it or not, your neighborhoods have active drug addiction going on. People just aren't talking about it because of guilt, shame, and fear of getting caught. That's what's scary. Having worked one-on-one over the past several years with women who want to be clean and sober...
Excuse me, could you summarize your three minutes?
I'm almost done. I'd much rather have a house across the street filled with women who show up sober, who are working their butts off to stay that way, than to know that my neighbors are desperately suffering silently. So what I'm respectfully asking you to do is approve this zoning change request so our daughters, mothers, sisters, hairdressers, nurses, pastors' wives, everybody else can get the long-term help they need right here. They'll show up sober and simply need the long-term help to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald. James, is that Clark or Church?
Clark.
Thank you. Come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Clark, and I own the, some property adjacent to what is being proposed, approximately twenty-eight acres that borders Iris Lane and Milk Creek Road. This property is directly in the back of my place. This place has been in my family since nineteen thirties. I've struggled to keep it for a number of years in hopes to hand it to my son and my grandson. And the neighborhood there is relatively unchanged since I was a kid. I still got the same good neighbors. They still own the same properties. And now that I'm retired, I get a lot of joy of going there, spending time on the farm, taking the grandkids, and I know that there are a lot of good people in that neighborhood. And while I certainly realize the need for facilities like this, I just can't bring myself to want to have it right next door to me. I don't think, it certainly wouldn't do anything for property values. Pretty convinced of that. At some point in time that I wanted to sell my property, I'm sure someone would look at it and look at the surrounding areas, and I don't think it would be good. And I don't think it would be good. Um, and I've talked to quite a, a number of people that pretty much feel the same way. So I'm asking that the board respectfully reject this, and hopefully uh, another spot will be found that would be more suitable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Mr. Decker?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Decker, and I own the property that they're, uh, they're talking about rezoning. Um, let me, let me try to clarify one thing. I know we're looking at twenty point something acres, is that right? That's not the amount of property that's gonna be hopefully transferred to the Hope Center. Uh, I have a map, if anybody's interested. That was not available at the time that they started the process because my surveyor was not able to complete his work due to the weather. What the amount that's gonna be conveyed is actually only seven point seven acres with about a hundred and fifty-foot road furniture on Walnut Creek Road. It will not go all the way over to Iris Lane. I understand the concern for property values. I will maintain the other eighteen acres that goes over to Iris Lane. I came to build a house, uh, if this one sells with this process, right behind where the Hope Center would be. I would not do anything to depreciate values or cause any problems in the neighborhood. Even though, uh, it's not a, a neighborhood where we get together for fish fries every Friday or something. I know a couple of guys in the room, but for the most part, nobody comes up my driveway. There have been a few people in the last couple of days, but in the fifteen years since I built my house, people don't go up my driveway. They don't know who I am, I don't bother them, they don't bother me. I feel like that's pretty much the way the Hope Center would be. It's not gonna be another structure that's built on the road. It's gonna be my house, a thousand feet off of the road, that's not visible during eighty percent of the year. My mother-in-law and sister-in-law live next door. So I would not, uh, do anything to, to devalue their property or make their lives any more difficult. I don't have to do this, it's a choice. And I think that everybody wants to fix a problem as long as it doesn't bother them, as long as it's not in their backyard. But this time it is. I think it's gonna be a plus. Uh, if I thought that there was any negatives, uh, that would affect other people, I wouldn't do it to start with. But I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it's gonna have any negative effects. It will, it's something we need. Do we need it on my property? I don't know. We need it someplace, so. Any questions?
Any question from us? Thank you, sir. Mr. Jeff Lynch?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Jeff Lynch, I'm the pastor at Compassion Church. And Compassion Church is intimately connected with Hope Center Ministries. And so, uh, we are kind of under the same umbrella. Compassion Church will be connected with Hope Centers when we get a facility up and running at some point. Um, as, uh, as a, as a neighbor personally, uh, our family home is within about five minutes of the proposed property. Our church is within about five minutes of the proposed property. So what we're talking about is not something that's way out there for me personally. Um, it's in our backyard as well. Um, as a pastor of Compassion Church, I think it's worthwhile to say to you gentlemen, you ladies this evening, that, um, um, I understand and I appreciate the concerns of these citizens. I absolutely understand why they're standing and why they're here. Uh, petition of a hundred-plus people is impressive. I would also like to say though, that, that our church is a church with, um, average Sunday attendance this past quarter, three hundred and fifty people. And that three hundred and fifty people who are also citizens have voted with their wallets um, in February of last year by raising over thirty thousand dollars with the dreams of getting a Hope Center going. And so I understand that you guys, uh, your role is, is to hear the people and to make sure that the citizens are taken care of, to hear the voice of the citizens. But what I wanna say to you this evening is that, um, uh, number one, not just the folks who are here, not just the people who are signing the petition, but, but others, uh, hundreds of others are matter-of-fact for this proposition. Um, also, I would like to say that, that, uh, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but what I have heard through the grapevine over the last few weeks is that there have been people knocking on doors saying, a- as Mr. Robertson said, um, we don't wanna have a halfway house. We don't have a, we don't wanna have a place for indigenous people. That's not what this is. Uh, this is a, a place that's going to be located in a, in a home that's off the road, can't be seen from the road. The people who are in the Hope Centers, as he mentioned earlier, across the nation, are people who, um, have a very structured lifestyle. They're up early in the morning doing devotions, working on things in their first phase. In their latter phases, they have jobs and they're working. So these aren't people who are just sitting around the house trying to get over, uh, this addiction. They are actively working. I also would like to remind all of us that, uh, the face of addiction has changed greatly over the years. Um, the people who are now trying to recover from addiction are no longer just people who are dealing with uh, all kinds of issues that we've seen the face of in the past, but these are our doctors.
Excuse, excuse me, sir. Could you bring you to a summary?
Yes, sir.
Your three minutes is up.
Was that already three minutes? The face is our sons, our daughters, it's our doctors, our, it's our lawyers, it's everyone. So what I would like to say to, to you folks this evening, uh, appreciate the time, and, and we're excited about finding a place somewhere. We feel like this is a great place, and we feel like there are a lot of other folks, uh, who maybe are not here tonight, who would agree that, that this is a excellent facility, excellent space for the facility. Thank you for your time.
Yes. Any questions? Thank, thank you, sir. Is that Dottie Anderson? Java, Virginia? I believe that was the other case she, I believe, did she come forward?
Janie.
Jan, Janet. Uh, Mr. Robertson, come forward, you, that's, excuse me, just a minute. Please come forward. Excuse me, but I want everybody to have opportunity to speak. Please state your name.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board, my name is Patty Johnson. I live in this district as well. Um, I bring a little bit of a different side to this whole story. I was a magistrate here, I served from two thousand six to two thousand fourteen in this district, the twenty-second judicial district, Danville, Pennsylvania, and Franklin Counties. I've seen firsthand of people begging for this at my window, or their family members. We have never had anything like this in this area. We neighbor Martinsville, Henry County, the opioid capital of the world. We've had Galax, we've had short-term, um, treatment facilities, we've never had anything like this. I was able to visit two of these treatment facilities for a pretty good amount of days in Tennessee. They're not what people think they are. It's, it's a total misconception. It is a house that people live in, a normal life. I think when people see this, they envision, uh, the halfway house that was on Main Street on the corner of Main and Holbrook, um, where the people hung out on the front porch and everybody knew what it was. This is not like that at all. I, I could take you by these hope houses and you'd never know that's what they are. Um, drugs have evolved. Back in the day, we dealt with cocaine, crack cocaine, which are mental addiction. You could send them to a short, short-term treatment center, they could get help, they could recover. Opiates have evolved to the point that those are physical addictions. They can kill you if you, if you do not get the, the proper treatment. It takes time to get off of these type of drugs. There's no facility like this in this area. The need here is greater than about anywhere. And we don't have it. Um, this, I, I own property within five miles of this place. Um, it, it's in it, like I said, it's, it's not a facility, it's not like a hospital, it's a house. People live here. They help them get jobs, they reteach them life, they teach them how to, to manage their checkbooks. Uh, they attend, um, church every Sunday. They go to, they have, um, a twelve-step program they attend once a week. Um, there's a lot of community members who come in and work with these people. And I've dealt with it from both sides of the fence. The legal side, where I've seen people beg for this. I've dealt with it on the personal side, where I've had family members with addiction problems. And I think everybody in this room is hard-pressed to not know anyone who has not gone through this recently. Um, I worked very closely with, uh, the state police when they investigated doctors and nurses when I was a magistrate. I wrote warrants for people you would never, ever dream of having this problem. And it's been, it's been hidden. People don't realize the need. And I just, I just implore you to please think about how things have changed and the need for this. And there is no perfect place.
Excuse me, could you summarize the time?
I, I'm done. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Yes, you'll have your turn, please. Any question for? Thank you. Please come forward and state your name. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Megan Smith, um, live on Walnut Creek Road. Um, behalf of all of the neighbors, everyone here, I cannot say that there's a single one of us who do not believe that there needs to be a facility like this in our community. We do need it. But we also, none of us, not a single person on the street, and all the hundred and two signatures believe that it needs to be where we feel comfortable and on our road. Yes, his street is off the driveway, was off the main road. But you do have to go past it back and forth. They say that people will come in, they will go out, they will leave. We feel comfortable leaving our door open and letting the kids play out in the front yard. Not saying that these people that are going to be in this place are going to so-called escape or even try to get out and hurt anyone. Someplace does like this, like this does need to be in our area. But we don't want it in our backyard and where we live, and we're trying to be comfortable in our home. Because just knowing that it's there makes us feel uncomfortable.
Any questions? Thank you. Is anyone who used to speak before I called Mr. Robertson back that did not get to sign up? Mr. Robertson?
No. No, it's got a gentleman.
Excuse me. Thank y'all. Good evening, state your name, please.
My name is Robert Orne. I live on Walnut Creek Road. I wouldn't plan on saying anything, but we've heard from, um, preachers and, you know, other different people too, but I would just like to say, you know, we've, we've heard stories about, you know, veterans and this and that. United States Marine Corps, uh, Operation Iraqi Freedom, two combat tours. So I stepped up and did what I did for my country so that I could live where I wanted to live, in the peace that I wanted to live. I work hard every day. I pay taxes, and I should have the right to live somewhere where I feel safe and secure. You know, it's a women's facility, no offense to women here. But, you know, women murderers, women, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's, it's, that's not the, a good argument, in my opinion, to say it's just women, you know, or something like that. Um, you know, I have two small children, I have one on the way, my wife is with me tonight. Um, we built our home on Walnut Creek Road because of the area. We picked it out because of the area. We feel safe there, and my wife's immediate reaction was, I'm not gonna feel safe. Because, you know, all the stats of, you know, this helps this person, this helps that person. To me, it's all irrelevant. It only takes one. It only takes one person to fall back on their addiction, to wanna break into my home because they feel the need to steal something. Because these are the realities of drug use, because I was a police officer in the city of Danville as well. So I know that, yeah, you may be doing better, but tomorrow you may not. And you're gonna go looking for some way to get it. And it's not fair to me to, the people that live in my neighborhood. You know, the other gentleman said, we don't have cookouts together, we don't do this. We may not with him. But with these people, I went to school with them, they married my friends, we're all very close. And so, yeah, we do all, we are a neighborhood, we are a unit. And I just wanna say that, you know, what if it was in, in your backyard, or in your backyard, or in your backyard, or your backyard? How would you feel? Probably a little uncomfortable, if we were all gonna be honest with ourselves. Um, so I would just like to say that I hope you're taking into consideration the family element and the uncomfort that we have as a family, uh, with what could possibly happen. It only takes one. So, thank you. Good evening.
Any questions? Thank you. Good evening, state your, state your name.
I'm Jackie Lynch, and I never wanted to open my mouth, but let me tell you something. I have visited other, um, Hope Centers in Tennessee, and I was quite ill-informed when I got there. Uh, the lady that toured me through the houses, I had no idea she was a recovering drug addict. Um, it absolutely floored me. And these, these women, they are women, are absolutely warriors. If I decide to not eat chicken, the first thing I want is chicken. And these women are coming on their face saying, God, please help me. And these women are coming for restoration. They're not coming for your children, they're not coming for your things that you have in your house. They've already done all that and they're done with it. And when they finally end up at these Hope Centers, they are at their wits' end. And how dare us not offer them the help and the hope that they're looking for? If my daughter was a drug addict, I certainly wouldn't send her to Main Street where the Hope Harbor used to be. I would send her to the house that Steve Decker is trying to sell us because it is beautiful. I asked the CEO, Josh Hannah, why are these houses so beautiful? He will not accept less than a standard for these women that are coming for help. And he said to me, would you send your daughter to a halfway house that looked like that? And I said, absolutely not. Would you send your daughter there? Absolutely, I would. He does not settle for just whatever for these women. He settles for excellence. And praise God, Steve Decker has offered his house for us. The church is gonna be so intricately, um, involved in these women's lives. They are going to be productive members of the society, and I'll tell you something else. When Jeff and I and Gary took this to the law enforcement of Danville and the surrounding areas, all they could say was, thank you, God, somebody is stepping up. Our job is awful, and somebody needs to do something. So the fact that we want to, we wa, we get to help these women? Oh my goodness, how can we turn that down? I thank God, none of my children have had a drug addiction. If they had, and Jeff and I have sponsored many a woman to go to Tennessee, many a woman, um, many a man to go to Henry County. I promise you, if any of my children had an issue with drugs, I wouldn't send them to some, uh, facility that I wasn't entrusted to. I would send them to a Hope Center. If you could see what we've seen, you would know. And if it was your daughter, you would want her in Steve Decker's house to get all the help that she could.
Just a minute, any questions for you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come forward, please. Good evening.
My name's Jenny R., and I live on Walnut Creek Road. I've already spoken to Mr. Haymore, I bugged him on the phone a few weeks ago when I found out about it. I'm a Christian, I believe in helping people, I believe the Hope Centers. They're probably wonderful. Um, I support another ministry that does this, not this one, I don't know anything about this one really, but, and I actually support it, and I love the person who runs it. I'm not saying we shouldn't, you know, have these places, I just think that it should not be in our neighborhood. It shouldn't be in anybody's neighborhood, whether it's poor, or rich, or middle-class. There is so much land and so many houses that aren't right up beside everybody else that it could be in. I've had friends on drugs, I guess everybody has. Um, I know the back and forth of it, I know the, even when they come to Jesus, it's still a struggle there, there's still the flesh, there's still a struggle. And I'm just saying, you know, if you're in support of this, please put it on your road, you know? Or anywhere else other than mine, because nobody on my road is in support of this except for the one guy. And that's not fair to put us all at risk and take away our peace of mind, because you wanna help people. I wanna help people too, but I don't wanna do it at the risk of other people and their peace of mind. That's not right, unless I was to volunteer, you know? You know, my husband's a veteran, he used to be a police officer. Everybody knows, um, the risk involved here, and the fact that they're women. Um, women can be just as mean and evil as men. Um, things happen, and I'm sorry, I'm shaking, I hate public speaking. And I wasn't gonna do this, but I'm here, so, um, but I just, please, consider what you want it on. Um, but I just, please, consider what you want it on your road, in your grandchildren's road, on your children's road. There's a place for this and it's not in our neighborhood. It's not in anybody's neighborhood. And everybody on my road is really against us, that I can tell, except for the one guy. So that's all I had to say about it. Thank you.
Any question? Is it anyone else? Mr. Robertson?
This shouldn't be in anybody's neighborhood, is what I just heard. The first time I appeared before you, uh, this group of extinguished, or distinguished, pardon me, uh, group, uh, the first question I was, I was hit with, "Where have you been?" Here we are. What else can we do? I understand fear. Uh, we all deal with it in one way or another. I've never been in addiction, thankfully, by the grace of God. But I have come to know that some of my dearest friends are people that I have learned through addiction. And here's the message that's going around and around in my head. My wife, along with some other ladies, goes into local jails talking to these women. And there are ladies sitting in jail right now that are getting ready to be released from jail. But they are appealing to the legal system. "I don't want to leave jail until I can get in the Hope Center." What do you go back and say to those ladies? "Sorry, we don't want you around us." Say, "Well, they made the choices." Yes, haven't we all? I speak in courts a lot, because I'm the individual that works with admissions. And I've, I've said in courts, in this county and other counties, that the legal system looks at a person's past and that's clear. It's in black and white. What we are doing as a Hope Center is try to imagine what a person's future can be. And that can be cloudy and it, it can be a tough deal at times. But the reality of it is, if all of us were judged by our past, we'd all be in trouble. And when we look at a significant population of our communities, that individuals and families are dealing with addiction, if we say, "Hey, we don't want you here," we are bringing our worst fears into reality. Because the fact that we say, "We don't want you here," doesn't mean they suddenly vaporize. I, I want to thank you folks for listening to us over the last number of months or weeks, however long it's been. Um, and it's, it's in your hands, obviously. Uh, and God bless you and thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
Uh, when you first came before us, when you looking at another site? Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Okay, so the site, when you first came and we said, "Where have you been?" Or in those types of words, it was a, but the location has changed through the months as we've been going through this process step by step. Is that correct?
Well, it, it changed. It, it's in the same general area.
Right.
Uh, but it changed because while we were waiting to go through the process, somebody else bought the property.
Okay.
So it, that, that was what happened on that.
Right, okay.
Uh, we, we didn't go looking for a community and say, "Who can we, uh, take advantage of?" I mean, that...
Right, I didn't make, I hope you didn't think I meant that.
No, no, not at all.
Any, any questions?
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
How tight is the security at this home? I mean, are they free to roam or if they go outside, is it fenced? I mean, how, what protection would the community have?
They, they are there within a, a regulated area. Now, it's not a lockdown facility like a jail or a prison, obviously. Uh, it's a recovery center, uh, but we have staff there, uh, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, we have cameras. We, we... And, and the thing that, that precipitates these issues relative to somebody trying to break into a house or what have you is, is because they're on the drugs. Well, we drug test every week. If they fail a drug test, our next call is to probation. So they end back up in the system. So it's not, they're just running here, there and everywhere. Uh, it, it is a, a, a very systematic program, uh, that lasts, uh, uh, anywhere from eight to, to, uh, twelve, uh, months. Uh, so it's not just a, uh, a, a Band-Aid being put, uh, on, uh, on the issue. Uh, and as, as I said, uh, the, the center that we have in Henry County, it's got homes there in that area too. There has not been the first instance of anybody from our Hope Center bothering a, a neighbor or creating issues. As a matter of fact, the thing that I get more than anything else in our community is people saying, "Thank you guys for what you're doing." We have had civic organizations that have given us substantial grants recently because they see what we're doing and the change that it's making in individuals' lives.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
Has there ever? Has there ever been a documented case of anybody from one of the centers interfering with, um, someone in the neighborhood?
No, not to my knowledge. Certainly not in our center, uh, not in this area. And I'm not aware of anything happening in, in, uh, Texas or Tennessee of, of that nature.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
If I understood, maybe I misunderstood after you've been asking. Uh, if, and I do not know the outcome, whether this will pass or will not. I have no idea.
I understand.
I have not talked to either one of the, uh, commissioners about this. But if I understood it, you have, if this is turned down, you have money that y'all can go purchase land somewhere else. It's not a dead issue. Am I thinking correctly on that?
That, that, uh, that's true. I mean, uh, our contract, uh, with the present owner is that it's subject to the zoning approval. Um, of course, the, the thing becomes then too, uh, if not here, then where? You know, it, it, it's still that, that same issue that you're dealing with.
You'll have to go find another location.
Absolutely.
Another location. That's what I want to be sure of that. But it is still in the works. You still have the contributions coming in. And it's a growing, uh, issue for Pennsylvania County that is growing, uh, in the positive, not in the negative.
Well, I've, I've talked, I've personally talked to law enforcement officers here in the area. I've talked to judges here in the area. Uh, and you've had judges that have, uh, uh, released individuals to come into our Men's Center. The, the legal, uh, community knows what this need is. And, and, and we want to be in Pennsylvania County if at all possible. It, it doesn't mean that, uh, it's not necess, it's... If we have to go looking for other places, it doesn't necessarily mean it will end up in Pennsylvania County. We wanna be here because we think this is a good place to be and it's a need. It's, it's a good distance from our Men's Center and, and yet, here, here's the thing. How, I live in Henry County. How long did it take me to get from my home here tonight? Thirty minutes? How long does it take a drug dealer or a drug addict to go across county lines? They, they don't stop and say, "Oh, no, I'm getting ready to go into another county. I can't go over there." You see what I'm saying? It's, it's, it's an insidious kind of thing that if, if we say, "Well, uh, we want it in this place" or "We want..." The, the problem's out there.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Dr. Mill. Go ahead.
I'm going to... I'm gonna take a significant risk in communicating what I'm about to communicate. But I'm going to do it because of something that was on the news within the last week. I think all of us, as we watch the national news, are aware of the fact in the city of Danville, there's the White Mill in the river, Dan River, and how the powers that be are considering placing a casino in Danville, Virginia.
That's exactly what you needed.
Is anybody aware of this fact?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, there are obviously some people that are very happy at that and there are also a number of people who are very much concerned about what could possibly come to this region of the state. And anybody that lives in the country is aware of Las Vegas and Reno and Atlantic City and whoever else and the attendant matters that come with that. Organized crime, prostitution, drug addictions, what have you. And we might want to take a look at the larger picture of what could potentially come to be, um, as we make this decision, so... And really, there is a, a lot more that I could say, but I think I've said enough to cause us to think a little bit. Well, wait, no, I'm gonna say one other thing. There's a statistic that, um, well, somebody's already mentioned it or mentioned something similar to this. But you take just in the case of things like HIV and AIDS. Are we aware of the fact that we live in the epicenter of the three largest HIV/AIDS areas in the state of Virginia? Martinsville, Danville, Norfolk. And that's just one social problem. But as we think and consider what we're considering right now, it should give us a lot of reason to think hardly, think, think strongly about it. I'll stop right there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I guess I'm the only female on this. I am the only female. No guessing about it.
Nothing hidden. Everything's good.
And you know, a woman's heart, you know, I haven't talked to Mr. Haymore, no one on this commission about this. I think the key word tonight is compassion. I think we all Americans have compassion, some more than others. I like that church named Compassion Church. I've been, everybody here has, has voiced how they feel. A lot of it's fear of the unknown. A lot of it, Ms. Fitzgerald, Mr. Deckler, um, they've expressed their fault as others. Since I've retired, I, I look at a little more TV in the morning. And just last week, they interviewed the chief of the fire department. I don't know whether y'all saw that or not, from Huntington, West Virginia, where there is an epidemic of epin, um, drugs of all kinds. And the community has surrounded her. They have taken these patients or people that are addicted and are trying to encourage them, give them compassion. And like we said tonight, where is the right place? We've gotta start somewhere. You look in the newspaper every day and there's been killings. There's addiction. A lot of it stems from that. They're killing their parents. They're killing their grandparents for money to get these drugs. It's gotta come to an end. I appreciate what you're doing, for your efforts and your hard dedication. Personally, I think we should be honored that Pennsylvania County is chosen for a place like this, for people who hopefully can restart their life. That's all I gotta say.
Any others? You have anything else?
If I may make, uh, one more comment. As I said initially, uh, Hope Center ministries were started in, in, uh, middle Tennessee, about an hour west of, of Nashville. When we learned of what they were doing there and, and went out and to, to see what was happening, the group that, that went came back and said, "How can we not try to get this in our community? In our area here in Southside?" And the people in Tennessee made a significant investment here in Virginia to help get all of this started. It's now time for us to help ourselves.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir. At eight twenty-eight, case S nineteen dash oh oh one is closed to public ears. Any discussions? Before we call for it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is in my, uh, district. Nobody is more familiar with drugs probably than I am. For thirty-two years, I served as clerk of court in this county. I know there is a need for this type of facility. And I commend Mr. Robertson, Jeff and the other folks that are trying to, uh, put this together. I was appointed to this commission about three years ago. My supervisor, I'm, is sitting back there in the back verifying what I'm gonna say. I told him that I would accept that position with one string attached to it. And I might know what was good for my community, but I had absolutely no clue what might be needed at Mount Cross, Renaun, Straight Stone, or what have you. And I told him tonight that he asked me to serve on this, that if the citizens in the community came forward and was opposed to something, that I was gonna be opposed to it. I have seen one hundred and two signatures opposing this and I have had thirty-three phone calls, all opposing this facility in this particular location. So, Mr. Chairman, based on that, case number S nineteen dash zero zero one, a move that we deny the special move permit to the board of supervisors.
Motion by Mr. Haymore to recommend to the board to zone the field to deny this special use permit for residential addition treatment group home is our second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Duddy. Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussions? I would like to say that, Mr. Horn, thank you for coming forward. How can you ask for a community that has stood up and said, we praise what is being presented to you, but we do not want it in our community? And I agree with Mr. Haymore. I don't know how they can express it. And true, the history says that we have not had no bad accident reports from this addiction, but it don't take but one. And how would you like for one of your family members, if you said, yes, come into my community and help? I don't know how you can express it. This is just my personal opinion and I only have one vote. But I think the community has said, yes, it's a need for it, but we do not want it at this location. Anybody else, please?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think what we all need to know, regardless of how we feel, I hope we can all go home and still be friends. That's just my thinking.
Anybody else? Ms. Hayes, you call to roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe? Ms. Mese?
No.
Dr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
The motion for case S-19-001 is to recommend to the board of supervisors to deny this special use permit for residential addiction treatment group center with four false, two against, and two absent.
And that would go before the BZA?
I mean, BCI, so, but thank you, Ms. Hayes. Y'all, if you want to leave, we have still some old business to continue. I ask you to leave in a quiet manner, please. Old business. Ms. Hayes?
We have the annual report in the packet. We just need someone to make a motion in a second to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the annual report.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Haymore to approve the annual report. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed. Six, four, two, absent. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I've got something I think would be appropriate under old business.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, yes, sir.
You have placed at your seat tonight a resolution relating to the solar project you have previously approved for Danville Farm LLC that is to be located at the Ringo Golf Club. And if you recall, this body considered the rezoning and the special use, I believe, and voted that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan and was appropriate for that particular location. We've since been approached by the developer of this project. And if need be, you can clean me up a little bit. But as I understand it, in terms of financing and getting other approvals, there's certain magic words, if you want, that they need to be clarified. One of the concepts is that it's in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan for Pennsylvania County. You all made that determination when you approved the plan, but we didn't have specific language that may be legally desired at this point. So what I have before you tonight is a resolution that simply states that the process has been properly followed. And just to call, and I'll be glad to read it all if necessary, but just to bring you to the resolution, that the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission, that the proposed solar energy facility was reviewed as the location, character, and extent, which you did, and determined by this planning commission to be substantially in accord with the adopted Pennsylvania County Comprehensive Plan, which, again, I think you have found that determination. You just didn't say it in this particular wording. So what I'm looking for, and you feel free to ask any questions, is just simply a motion to approve this resolution and authorize the chairman to sign it.
I will certainly make that motion. We have, they have done, we have done everything that we're supposed to do in the order at which we're supposed to do. Now, I understand that going forward, you've got the DEQ. You've got a ton of other permits and red tape to go through. But we have done our part. By all means, I'll make a motion and Mr. Chairman sign this document tonight.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Haymore to approve the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission certification of substantial in accordance determination. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed. Six, four, two, absent.
Use my pen. Sign it.
This ain't legal. They ain't got the legal. I'm just kidding. Any other old business?
I had no other.
New business?
No, sir, I had nothing.
Meeting adjourned at 8:37.